You're all set.
We're all set. Yep, we got a little.
I was gonna put eye drops in.
And your mic's off? All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Town of Hamilton Board Selectment Meeting for Monday, December 20th, 2021. Our last meeting of 2021. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, I will start with announcements and board openings. Hopefully some New Year's resolutions will result in more people volunteering in town. Finance Advisory Committee has two associate openings. It's a good time to be part of it because it is budget season, so it's fun to watch that go together. Conservation Commission has one opening, and they're busy working on 133 Essex. The Hamilton Historic District Commission has one opening. Open Space Committee has two openings. Hamilton Planning Board has one associate member opening. The Hamilton Affordable Housing Trust has one opening. The Hamilton Human Rights Commission has one opening, the requirement being the Housing Authority rep, and the Hamilton Zoning Board of Appeals has one associate opening. We will now let a public comment, three minutes for anything not on the agenda. No one's in the room. We have people.
You have Corinne Cale to speak at public comment.
Okay, Corinne.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks so much. I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on several projects that'll be coming your way from the Clerk's office over the next couple of weeks to the next couple of months. So, believe it or not, we've already got the calendar planning done for the April 7th local election. Nomination papers will be available January 10th. So it's right around the corner. I'm gonna present it, your next meeting in January with much more detail on all this, but I just wanted to give the general heads up. Nomination papers, January 10th, to be returned by February 17th. The calendar year 2021 Office of Campaign and Political Finance filings, the reports are due by January 20th. So that's for every elected official, including myself. It's not just those who were elected this past year. So just give folks a heads up. You'll be hearing from me about the completion of those reports. The calendar year 2022 Conflict of Interest Acknowledgement of Summary and Completion of the Online Training, the Every Other Year Training. I'll be getting out emails to all employees, all members of boards and committees, and to all elected officials as well. So heads up on that. The calendar year 2022 Street List Census Forms will be going out in the mail the last week of December. Those will go to 3,000 households. And as you may recall, the dog license renewal form, the trash schedule, and a notice of the upcoming precinct change will all be included in that mailing. So mailing's pretty, it's really two separate projects because it's the census forms, but it's also the dog license renewal. So it'll be a little hectic. We are gonna ask residents to get those census forms back in as soon as possible. The form does say return within 10 days. So I'll be working through, through others to get, get the word out to residents in town. And last, but certainly not least, I'm already getting the schedule for the April 2nd Annual Town Meeting and the last day to post the warrant, which means the entire warrant has to be done and signed, is Saturday, March 26th, which is seven days before the meeting. So again, just wanted a general heads up. If you have any questions right now, happy to answer them. If not, I'll be at the next meeting.
Thank you, Corinne. Any other public comment?
There is nobody else on the Zoom, so.
Okay.
There's raising their hand for public comment, Dennis.
All right, we have a consent, I'm sorry, we'll do selectmen and town manager reports. And we can start with Jamie, you have anything?
Yeah, I'll make mine nice and short. The, took a tour this last Thursday along with some other members of the Affordable Housing Trust, Hamilton Development Corporation, and David Wanger from FinCom, et cetera, and other things, of the Willow Flats Project downtown. And it's coming along, and I think everybody will, will be proud of it once it's done. They're very, they look like they're gonna be very nice and energy conservation oriented and so. And the only other thing I will say, this is a little, a little sappy, but I definitely want to wish everybody here and there, happy holidays and a joyous and safe holiday. And, you know, I, normally this time of season goes by with a blur and it just, and it kind of feels temporary and like a facade, the joyous feelings and whatever. But I don't know, I guess I'm just thinking about a little bit more this year, like, really like to see a turn among, among, among our whole society for just to be more concerned about the common good. I really, I, I'm just trying to hold out hope that that can happen. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie. I concur.
Ditto. But I, I had a couple of things. I don't want to say too much about the dance recital because I know Rosie had, has more to say about that, but I just wanted to let you know that it was wonderful. It was, it was, I, I just don't even have words. It was just, it evoked emotion that I wasn't really expecting, and I just thought it was wonderful. I loved seeing all those people, young women of all sizes and shapes and just doing, they were so fierce in their dancing, and it was, it just made me feel good. So I would love to see them again. I really would. And the other thing is, is there an update on the backflow valve for the Grove? Have we had a date so that we can keep this in the front burner?
Yeah, so you, at the last meeting, the board did approve some funds to necessarily do design and bidding, and we have signed with the, to get the, I've signed a contract to have the design bid work done, so it's being undertaken right now by our contractors.
Oh, that's wonderful.
They're in the business, planning it right now and getting us a bid, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
And that's, that's it for me.
I'll jump in, we'll just keep going around the room here. My, my daughter was in that performance, and she got as much joy out of it, I think you did, and she'd be happy to be invited back with their troupe, so she would love to.
A worky garnish.
And the pizza, she appreciated the pizza too, so thank you, Darcy and Rosemary for that. A couple of quick things, we'll talk about, Joe and I went and did a tour of Gordon Conwell, went there for a couple of reasons. One is master planning, we looked at some master planning opportunities for the properties, so we looked at that for some opportunities, and then we also looked at what we're gonna talk about later in the meeting for an opportunity to maybe relocate second floor of Town Hall over there where it's a safe and accessible environment. So one of the things we're looking at. Also, 133 Essex Street is still ongoing with the Planning Board. They've had a couple procedural meetings talking about process, and the applicant will come back again. I think it's, I'll look while you guys, I think it's tomorrow they come back. It might be next, a continuance, I think it's a continuance.
It's a continuance.
Yes, or another continuance.
I'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, so it's been three meetings without the applicant there, talking about procedural issues. And the community, in terms of what, what Jamie, Jamie, the community supported the Ed Fund, Sherwood, I think they sold out their trees in about seven days, and I haven't seen the final numbers yet, but we've raised a lot of money for our kids in our school district based on the community support, so that was great to see. And a lot of people volunteered to do that, so. That's all I have today. I will start with, go to Rosemary and then Sean, and I'll come back to you, Joe.
Okay, so I have a few things. First thing is, I attended the Chewbacca Lake All-Wife Brook Coalition that is, has been put together by Bruce Tar. The coalition is certainly growing, I'm learning a ton and really enjoying the company of the people who are involved, and certainly Bruce is, is super as well. And the plan at this point is to think about some events to raise awareness of the importance of protecting Chewbacca Lake and the, and the Brook from cyanobacteria and other forms of contamination. So for the Master Plan Steering Committee, we had a meeting, I think it was last week. And the next step is that we are in process of developing questions for the town survey. It's a pretty, it's a pretty much a team effort. Everybody is offering their opinions. We're looking at the 2002 Town Survey and the 2016 Town Survey to come up with some broad-based questions to get some opinions. Next, the dance performance, oh my gosh. Oh my gosh, you two had, Darcy and Bill have commented, these kids, let me tell you, that Bosama School of Dance and the parents, but I'll tell you, they are doing something right. Those young women were dedicated, they were, they were serious, they gave so much to the audience. We were all toe-tapping and smiling, and then the scene, and then the kids came over. They were all teenagers, like from 12 to 15 or 16. These kids were amazingly accomplished, they worked very hard. And Catherine Hooper, the owner and the director of the school was there, as was Stephanie, and I've, I worked with Kelsey as well. And the kids came over after the performance and were interacting beautifully with the seniors. I mean, nobody left there feeling that they were not part of the whole process. And I'd like to thank my colleague, Darcy, for helping to sponsor the pizza supper to go and also Five Sons Pizza, what's not to love about Five Sons? So thank you very much. And then finally, Grail Clark and Ingero have both contacted me regarding their concerns about what they perceive as less-than-stellar implementation, ongoing, of, of ongoing compliance with our compost bin project. They told me that the compost rate is back to about 9.7%, which was the rate before we started the compost plan, and they couldn't figure out what was going on. So they just took a random drive down Molton Street, and within one mile, they said there were 17 or 18 houses with no green bins, no exemption stickers, and their trash was taken. So they couldn't understand this and called me and asked me to mention this at a selectman meeting, and hopefully Joe can look into this and find out what might be going on because the state used us as, as a model, and they're looking to us to implement this successfully. So I think, I think that was all for me.
It's, when is our contract up with, because, is it another year or is it?
We've got, we've got a few more years.
Few more years, okay.
Three, three or four more years.
Their service has been spotty, but I know it's tough this time to find help and to find consistent employees, but they, yeah, it's worth having a discussion.
Okay.
Thanks, Rosemary.
Welcome.
Not too much for me, really, just happy winter solstice tomorrow, happy holidays to everybody. I'll keep it short and sweet so we can get on with it.
What's the shortest day of the year tomorrow?
Yeah, shortest day of the year tomorrow. Enjoy it.
Then it's back to sunsets at nine.
I forgot, I forgot something.
All right, back to you.
So just real quick, so the Human Rights Commission, by the way, we meet every month, third Wednesday of the month, and the reason I bring it up this time is, so there are two things that we were sort of tasked with doing that are now gonna be headed back to the select board. So one is sort of, kind of a definitions section recommended for the policy itself, and then the other is, we have written a statement about ADA accessibility.
Great, okay. Yeah, it was gonna be on the agenda this week, but we decided, because there's so many things, that we will tackle it in January.
Yep.
And what do you have today? You were, so you talked about doing a draft report, right?
So I, I sent you this evening, more for discussion purposes today, a draft of a new template that I was working on, I was looking, I'll be looking for feedback from the board either tonight, later on, when that gets to us on the agenda, or, you know, between now and the next meeting so that I can kind of refine the template and do, provide you with a little bit more of what you're looking for. A couple of things, I filled in a couple of things there just to give you an idea of kind of what, how it would lay out, and I'd like to let you know that the new Council on Aging Director began today. Teresa Woodbury was there bright and early at 8:00 AM and has her laptop moving, going into, she'll be here, obviously, helping with the seniors and their senior holiday lunch on Thursday that I believe is being done with the assistance of the Community House and several volunteers there as well, so, so that, that's good to know. I was asked earlier about the, what progress, if any, there has been on the cell tower. The last we've heard from Everest is that Verizon told them that they were trying to get out here on the pole by the end of the month. It's two weeks out at the end of the month, and I haven't heard from Verizon.
Right.
Asking about how to get access to the site or pull out permits or anything, so, but Everest tells us that's what they were told by Verizon, so I, I don't know. I know that we haven't told them, they tend to have a very busy schedule of trying to get on, getting, getting work done, so.
And not to throw a monkey wrench into that, but I have heard that some areas of the country are putting a hold on 5Gs. There have been some concerns about health. I don't know, I, I don't know what's going on. I know we keep telling residents that we have done everything that we need to do on our end.
Yeah, I, I'll ask about 5G. I don't think that, I, I don't believe that this, the equipment here is necessarily 5G equipment, but I can, I can definitely look into it and confirm that. My understanding was that 5G equipment required more smaller antennas closer together, and that's one of the things that's, that's held up, the development of that, is that you'd have like, I think, a year and a half, two years ago, Sean, the MB, State Mass DOT or MBTA were talking about wanting to put them at certain mile markers along major state roads and.
Yeah, came from the Planning Board, they came from the Planning Board, and, yeah.
Cities and towns began to push back, and so that all went away because the state owns those rights away. There are cities and towns that have.
The micro towers, yeah.
And so the micro towers are being pushed back on. This isn't a micro tower, obviously. Quite the opposite. So I don't believe it's the same thing, but we'll, we'll, we'll confirm that they're not looking to put 5G equipment up there. I don't think they, I think they need more repeaters.
Okay. Yeah, just a question.
But I'm definitely not an engineer, so.
Do you have anything else on the, that's worth mentioning today, on the updates?
I, I had, no, you know, we've, we've also engaged a contractor, we're moving forward with the pretreatment plant that you authorized the funds for at the last meeting as well, so that should be rolling along very soon, so we were able to lock that price in.
And then, I would, if you could put in your, in your updates, the social media, website, updates, communication type stuff, that'd be a good topic to have as well.
Okay.
We have three things on the consent agenda, we're going to hold one and vote on it separately.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify the senior lunch at the, at the Community House?
They're doing, they're doing a holiday lunch.
Yeah, I knew that, I thought it was Tuesday, it's not tomorrow.
Tuesday?
No, no, I don't, I, I may be wrong, so I just.
I thought it was Thursday, but I may be wrong. If, if.
I can look it up.
Yeah, I'll check my email.
Okay, please, yes, thank you, just so we make sure.
Yeah, we don't want to give anybody the wrong day, so.
It is tomorrow, it's Tuesday.
Ah, okay, yeah.
Keep Corinne.
Thanks, Corinne.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought it was, but.
I apologize, thank you for correcting me.
That's good, that's good, because I remembered hearing Tuesday, but one never knows.
Okay, we have three items on our consent agenda, we're going to hold one and vote on it separately because we have one change to it. So two things on the consent agenda are approve minutes of board of selectmen meeting from November 1st, 2021, and declare certain fire department equipment as surplus property. So are there any comments on the meeting minutes from November 1st? And I see Ray is on, is he here to talk about the?
Only if you have questions, and then you should take it out of consent. The reason for the consent is to not add discussion about it.
Okay.
He's only here in case you had questions, but.
All right, so I have a motion for.
I move that we approve the minutes for the Board of Selectment Meeting from November 1st, 2021, and we also declare certain fire department equipment as surplus property.
Have a second, have a second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All's opposed? All right, so on the second item, thank you, Ray. On the second item, Joe, if you can clarify what the change is, please.
Yeah, so you have, the second item was the, the list of next meeting dates for January 2022 to June 2022. In June, because it's a new holiday, I failed to recognize that we'll be recognizing Juneteenth on June 20th, and therefore Town Hall will be closed, so we recommend that you change the meeting date there to Tuesday, June 21st. So all the other dates that I had in front of you would be the same, with just the change to June 21st for the meeting, for the second meeting in June.
Sean, go ahead.
I, I move that we approve the Board of Selectmen meeting calendar with the change from June 20th to June 21st.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All's opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
So we have 12 items on our agenda, more than half of them are procedural, so we'll try and move as quickly as we can to, and appropriate as we can. So the first item on the agenda is to extend the term of Bill Bowler, who's graciously accepted to stay on the ZBA until June 22. So I don't have much discussion here from my point of view, but he's.
No, I'll make a motion so we can just kind of.
Yeah, we'll make a motion, we can talk about it.
I move that we extend the term of Bill Bowler, who's very graciously continued on the ZBA to June 2022.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, Rosemary. Any further discussion?
Just thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
And we need somebody to.
Yes, we do.
It's double thanks at this time because this is a second extension.
And we need someone, and this is, this is it, so we need somebody to jump in and help out, it's a great opportunity, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All's opposed? All right, the next item on the agenda is appoint new member to Hamilton Development Corporation. So, Joe, can you just walk us through this? I know you have all the paperwork and.
Yeah, so the, there was a notice back on, about a month, a month and a half ago, that there was an opening on the Hamilton Development Corporation. You've notified it twice, consistent with your policy. A member, a resident applied, met with the HDC at one of their regular meetings, and the HDC chair did issue an email recommending his appointment based on a unanimous vote of the HDC members at that meeting, and the HDC chair is here if you have questions for him, as is the applicant.
I mean, yeah, I appreciate Scott joining, Scott, do you want to introduce yourself and? Where'd he go?
He's here. He's here.
Oh, Scott? Is that mute?
He might have had to step away for a minute.
Oh, he was literally just there.
I'm being muted, sir.
Oh.
Well, we have technical difficulties.
Yes, Scott was in his car, but he has bad service, so, well, we can start with Rick.
Yeah, no, Scott stepped up and, and was very enthusiastic about the idea of serving on the HDC as a replacement for our treasurer, Anthony Nickus, who'd served faithfully for eight years and was looking to step off. And we put out a call, and, and thanks to the Blackman advertising it. We didn't have anybody respond to the public announcements, so I reached out to Scott one-on-one, and he wanted to think about it, and he read all the enabling legislation and reports, and came back and said he was very excited about the idea of serving on the Hamilton Development Corporation Board as tracker.
Scott's back now, he's coming back now, trying to connect audio, just so you know. Scott, can you hear us now?
I think so, sorry, I'm, I'm on the road, it's been a little tough to connect, but thank you for, for entertaining my application.
Thanks, so Scott, I just introduced you with a little background, so you're, you're teed up.
All right, well, thank you, I don't know what questions you might have, but I heard about the opening on the HCC, and I always admire the organization and the town's support of it, and the HCC's main missit, mission is to help get things done in town that the town can't quite do on, on its own, and I'd like to, I'd like very much to help with that. I have some experience in other areas that might, might help with the town's library. We got over half the funding from the state to help make that happen, so it was something that we really couldn't do on our own. I was involved early on on the, when, back in the early 2000s, when the school committee cut all after-school programs, a few other parents and myself got together, I had my children in the high school at the time, and we, for at least a short term, a few years funded all the after-school activities because it suddenly got extremely expensive, so the town had a hard time supporting that, and we rallied a whole bunch of people to come together and for a variety of fundraisers and outreach and communications to get them run. The same thing, I think, with the town pool. I was very involved in the town pool activity, particularly really to helping to get the town of Wentworth on board to help pay a share of the cost, which maybe the, the pool wouldn't have happened without that. So I like, I like doing those types of things that help it, where we have a town need and we maybe need to go outside a little bit or leverage some other, other types of resources, so I would like to bring some of those experiences to bear with the HDC.
All right, thanks, Scott. We'll go around the room here and, and on the board, and then we'll make the motion, but I just wanted to make a comment, I mean, I worked with you on the select board for the first year, year and a half I was on, and I also know you wanted to be part of the Capcom, you wanted to stay involved in terms of Capcom and, and the Master Planning Steering Committee, which we're unable to be part of, because we had lots of volunteers on those things, but I appreciate your commitment to be involved, and I just wanted to, you know, make sure you still the commitment that you, you know, will, will sort of, you know, you're not on the steering committee for the master plan, but obviously that's gonna help guide your decisions you guys make, so as long as you sort of, like you said, work in the best interest of the town and take all things into account. I think that's what we're looking for.
Absolutely.
We'll start down here and we'll work our way across. Do you have any questions for Scott, Jamie?
I don't, I mean, yeah, I, I know Scott, and I know and seen his work as a selectman when he was on and other things related to the town, and the one thing I was gonna mention, so I guess I can ask it as a question for Rick, even though I know the answer because I was there, or I guess I can just say it, but, right, so the Hamilton Development Corporation voted unanimously to approve Scott, is that right, Rick?
Yes.
So, yeah, I don't have any questions.
Darcy?
Yes, I, I actually have some questions because when I was on the FinCom, we had some issues getting information from the Board of Selectmen on the Long Meadow Project, and it just seemed that it was not a terribly collaborative effort on, on their behalf. And I know that created a lot of division in town, I know that people moved, they sold their houses because they were so upset. And I'm really concerned about transparency, I'm concerned about regular order, I'm concerned about FinCom and other boards not being able to, to fully participate in some of these things that we've been doing over the past few years. So for example, the, you know, the marijuana farm at the Patton Estate, nobody had a chance to vet that project, the town council didn't, and neither did FinCom, and I know because I was on the FinCom. So I am concerned about things like that. I'm also concerned about being told that there was a pilot payment of over $30,000, and that there was a check, and that it was in the town's safe, and that turned out not to be true. So I am concerned about, about this particular appointment.
Well, speaking from the HDC, HDC was not involved in any of the areas that. Well, speaking from the HDC, HDC was not involved in any of the areas that you expressed concern with.
But that was, wasn't that for Scott?
Yes, yes, that wasn't about the HDC, Rick. Although I do have a question for the HDC. If the HDC is a private nonprofit, and the town board, the board, the select board, doesn't have any mechanism or oversight, why are we voting to fill out the roster? I don't understand, I guess I don't understand the mechanics of the HDC. I've been told so many different things, I'm confused. So I know that we can't find out where the money goes or how you spend it, we have no say on any of that, and yet every, every year at town meeting, we give a lot of money to them, to the HDC. So I'm, I'm kind of confused. We don't have any, I've been told we don't have any authority or responsibility.
It's not our, that's not our topic tonight, so we can talk about it.
Well, it's, I have a question.
Yeah, but that, that's not on the agenda for tonight to discuss.
Well, my question relates to why we are...
You have to ask Scott a question, please.
...filling a board.
Well, you have to ask Scott the question. We're not going to debate policy tonight, we're going to look at whether or not Scott is an appropriate applicant.
Well, these are just my concerns.
And I, and I think they're great concerns, it's just not, we can't discuss it tonight, it's on the agenda.
I'm done.
Yeah. But Scott, I don't know if you want to address any of the questions or comments you made.
Yeah, sure, I'm happy to talk about anything. Darcy, you might not be aware, but I, I suffered a fair amount of criticism from selectmen about Long Meadow, because I was reaching out to the neighbors and met with them regularly, keeping them up to date on what was happening, Bill Shields, others. They obviously were very concerned about a large development in their backyard, which is, is totally understandable, and overall, the attitudes about affordable housing in our, in our town are, are very strong. So it's no surprise that there are opinions of all, of all types related, related to that project. But that was always a very public activity. I always felt when any affordable housing project was coming along, it was important to inform the neighbors immediately and early. When I was a select board, I was the first person to talk to all the neighbors when there's possible considerations of things, according Conwell, and know many of those abutters. So many people don't like what happened there, which I understand, but it wasn't due to any lack of communications. And the same thing with the Patton homestead, I feel badly for the Pattons and how they were treated by some people outside of our town and even within our town, but that, that process is, is a highly regulated state process, of which we participated in. Everything was publicly disclosed at select board meetings. There was no hiding of any money or cash anywhere related to that, so there were no secret stashes of anything that anyone was using. So I think that the, the town legal council was fully aware of everything that was involved and what was going on with that, and the, if the FinCom didn't feel like it was getting enough information, there was no, there wasn't anything withheld, but there was always public discussion of that at Board of Selectmen meetings, and there was no, no lack of communication related to any of that.
Well, there was no funding mechanism, and if you had come to the Board of Selectmen, that could have been ironed out, and that's ultimately what, what taught, what threw the project into distress, because there was an SRO tie-in with that, and there was no funding mechanism for that, so it kind of threw a monkey wrench into it.
Yeah, I, I understand that's your interpretation of things. In fact, there is a state law and guidance about the amounts of money that flow to the town, which is what we had our right, had rights to, and that the, that it was, it was essential to be able to justify needs of security or safety or other, other needs, which is what the town did and demonstrated to the state. So the, the flow of money that you seem to be concerned about was, it never happened in the end, and what actually put a monkey wrench into things was a, in a butter to not in town, in Topsfield, who sadly kind of scared the wonderful Patton family off of the, of the whole project.
Well, I wasn't concerned with the, the money, any missing money in that thing. I was concerned about the pilot check that we were told was in the town's safe, but nevertheless, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. I mean, I was on the Affordable Housing Trust and the Select Board during the times, and I felt we were, that everything that we talked about was talked about in open meeting and debated. And even with SR, we talked many times with the FinCom, because we were trying to debate if, if we should make Wenham pay for some of it too, because it was a Hamilton cost, Hamilton was going to pay the rent, because we were going to get the money, so. But, I mean, we all have our opinions, and I appreciate it, but I just wanted to clarify that I don't, I don't remember being, anything hidden or behind the scenes. Rosemary, any questions for Scott?
Yep, I will contradict your statement, first of all, about Long Meadow. The abutters were furious that they discovered there had been what they considered to be secret meetings for a year and a half before this came to light, and a lot of the plan was made, in their opinion, behind closed doors. I am not here to debate that. What they may or may not have actually known, this is what was relayed to me, so I, I strongly disagree with your statement about being open about the whole process. The second question that I have is, the H, the HDC has passed a town meeting, with town meetings consent, an unlimited density in the mixed use in the downtown. So I'm, I have two, this question is two-part. I know that HDC in general does not have issues with higher density. That is juxtaposed with the town's vision of wanting an open-tempered growth in the downtown. So I'm wondering what your opinion is about high-density housing in the downtown, specifically in the business district?
So first, I'd like to comment on rumors or whatever you've heard without direct information about Long Meadow, and I distinctly remember many, many early, almost weekly meetings with Bill Shields and other neighbors, and Jack Lawrence, other people who were obviously very concerned about any affordable housing project happening on Long Meadow. And I never had any secret meetings anywhere. They don't exist in the world. You are a select person, you are sworn to the same duties that I was when I was a select person, and there was never any violation of those. So whatever you have heard, I'd appreciate if you could try to relay back to those people that I think all select people try to follow the same commitment to the high duty that, that we're obligated to. As far as what you're terming as high density, I don't believe in violating the town bylaws, so I don't know what you mean by high density. The town has, has our rules about what we can and can't do, and it doesn't, just because HDC is there to help the town do things it couldn't do on its own, doesn't mean that the HCC is going to try to do something that isn't appropriate for the town.
So, so your, your opinion is that should you be appointed to this position, you're going to commit to an open process about perhaps a higher-density predisposition, because some people feel that would bring in more money to the town versus what the citizens in this town want, because they're the people paying taxes, they're the ones who will incur the burdens of high-density housing?
Maybe, maybe you're not misunderstanding me. I don't, I think you're using the term high density, I don't know what that means. I think the town has bylaws about what the densities can be in different areas of our town, and it's not possible to violate those. So the, I think controlled growth within our downtown is very important, so I agree with you. People were very upset about different develops, developments in our, in our town, but they get control through the multiple town zoning, planning boards that we have. The HDC does not, does not override any of those things.
How about taking citizens' opinions into consideration, because you talk about the boards, and sometimes boards are not as open-minded about listening to, to citizens as we would like them to be? And what's your opinion about something you feel would be very beneficial in the short term to the town versus what citizens want? That's, that's my question to you. Who's, where, where's your, where would your predisposition be in a situation like that? For example, the higher density, well, when one considers our zoning is 20,000 square feet in town per, per dwelling, and now in the downtown district, we have unlimited density. So we have 18 units, one and two-bedroom units going into less than an acre, as well as 2,500 square feet of commercial space. So there are lots of abutters, long-term abutters, who are very upset with that. In fact, two directive abutters have moved out of town, which I, I'm, I'm very sad about. Now, I'm just asking you about your opinion. How, how would you reconcile that? Yes, there's an unlimited, limited density in the business district, but where's, where is the voice, as far as you're concerned, in planning and perhaps funding to some degree, buildings that are higher density? And I think 18 units on less than an acre, along with 2,500 square feet of commercial space in a town that has never had anything that large in such a small area, how would you, how would you deal with those competing interests?
Rose, I'll let him answer that, but I just want to, you've asked the question three different ways, three different times.
Well, I haven't gotten an answer, that's why I keep asking.
Because, because the HCC doesn't set zoning bylaws.
But I'm talking about transparent...
Right, so he's, what he says he's willing, he's going to work within the existing by...
He hasn't said that yet.
He did that, he says he's willing to work within the bylaws.
No, I, but I'm asking him, yes...
Scott, you asked a question, but I don't want to debate bylaws, because, because the HCC isn't, doesn't set bylaws for zoning. So we need to stay within the four corners of the question, which is, so we can talk about what, what his roles would be. His roles and responsibilities don't, don't revolve around writing, writing bylaws or writing zoning or voting on zoning bylaws.
I'm asking his opinion about high density, when perhaps 18 units on an acre is high density.
Scott, can you answer the question, so we can move on?
And how does, how does he feel about that if, if citizens objected to it?
So the, the citizens, there's citizen input on all of our projects, and the HCC, from what I can tell, has been a pretty transparent organization, and anything that the HCC gets involved in also gets thoroughly vetted by our planning board, or if there's any potential exceptions that might need to be done by the zoning board of appeals. So the role of this, of the HCC is not to create a ruckus in any, in whatever its, its project is. It's not intentionally trying to raise, you know, put up a tall tower in, in town and come up with high-density projects. That's, that's not, I, I would imagine that, and I, I can't imagine I'd be supportive if something would be that contentious.
I think there are a lot of very good things the HDC can do downtown. I want to be assured that it's going to be done transparently and in the best interest of the whole town.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Rick, on that note, can you just remind everybody when you guys meet and where?
We meet the first Wednesday of every month at, in the selectmen's meeting room at 8:00.
In the morning?
In the morning.
Thank you. And Sean?
Hi, Scott.
Hey, Sean.
No questions.
Okay. All right, so we'll make a motion, and then we can obviously have further discussion, but can I have a motion to appoint Scott Mann to the Hamilton Development Corporation?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
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 Pardon, sorry, thank you.
All right. So it's a three to two, a three to two vote in favor.
Thanks, Scott, for volunteering.
Thank you for volunteering, and I think you heard the message from members of the board that we just are looking for an open and transparent process moving forward, and I think I hear commitment from both you and Rick that, that will be your goal, and I, and I know, Rick, you've said before about, I think we had a discussion before, Rick, remind me, in terms of the financials are available on your, within your website for the, for your funding and spending, Rick?
They are, they're not on the website, but I will remind you that on a quarterly basis, the FinCom meets with the board, Hamilton Development Corporation, and wants to go through line item by line item where we're spending money and what our plans are for future expenditures. So that's how we communicate. We certainly put up a summary statement on the website, and once, and now that Scott is treasurer, we can make something happen.
Yeah, maybe that can be one of your first activities, so, to make your commitment to transparency. Well, thank you for joining, and Scott, thanks for calling in from the road.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the list is annual liquor license renewal for Weather Vane. So we had skipped them last time, because they were waiting on...
They were waiting on a...
Paperwork.
Paperwork.
Waiting on inspection, they had a rescheduled inspection, so that inspection's done, and all the paperwork's now in order, so it is before you.
Okay, so I have a motion?
I move that we approve the annual liquor license renewal for the Weather Vane Tavern.
Second.
Any further discussion? Joe, anything else we need to, no? Okay. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All's opposed? Okay. The next item on the agenda is annual entertainment license renewals changes.
Yeah, one of them has a change on some hours, I think you should have all seen that when you got the paperwork, and the other one is a new entertainment license on a different day for American Legion, so.
Can you sort of remind us what they are?
Joe, I didn't notice it in the packet. Hours or something like that?
Yeah, so 15 walnut, their previous license, previous entertainment license allowed them...
Is that the indigo?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
It's indigo, it's under indigo instead of 15 walnut.
It's under indigo, yeah, sorry. See, that's not where the change is. I guess, I guess the only change is on the, I thought, the only change is on American Legion, they want to add Sundays from 10:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, I guess they didn't have Sunday before. Yeah, they were previously only Monday through Saturday, so they're asking to add Sunday.
And this is for the Legion, right? You're talking about...
The American Legion, yes. So there is, there is no change to the, I was, I thought there was two changes, but it's just, yeah, the, the post.
Yes, this is, there's no changes to indigo, DBA, 15 walnut, and there's one change to the American Legion to just...
Just adding Sundays.
Sundays. And does Sunday trigger anything else, or just one more day they want to be open?
I think it's just, obviously they have new management there, they're trying to, you know, re-energize the club and offer some opportunities for members.
Well, it's weird, because the last one actually said Sunday, but there were no, there was no time on anything.
Yeah, so they didn't have it, they didn't have to use it on Sunday.
But it's weird that even says Sunday. Okay.
I move that we approve the annual entertainment license renewals slash changes for the submitted applications. That work?
Good response.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question. I thought that our, and I may be dating this, this may be a couple of years old, and I have not had a chance to clarify this, but the licenses, the entertainment license go, entertainment licenses go until 11:30, and I was under the impression that it's 11:00 p.m. in our town.
What was the last year's, they were in the...
I think they're the same, but it's just a, it's a clarifical question. I think they're the same, but it's just, it's a clarif question. It's a clarification question. I remember when Chief Stevens was here, the noise bylaw, the noise ordinance said till 11:00. So I'm just, I'm just wondering about that. Maybe I misheard it, but.
I mean, you may be right, it may be, because there's a couple of things. There's liquor, there's when liquor can be served, too, and then there's when that sound can be opened, too.
The previous.
I don't remember what the, we can look at the liquor license for.
The previous one was also till 11:30.
Yeah, the last one.
Was granted till 11:30 last year as well.
But was that, was that, the establishment can stay open until then? I mean, it just, on these licenses, it doesn't say when the entertainment ends?
I mean, it depends on what they're doing for entertainment. So, I mean, I think, you know, I'm sorry I didn't have that question to be able to research it before the meeting, but the entertainment license grants them the ability to offer entertainment, but that includes, like, leaving their television on. They're not allowed to run a television in a bar or restaurant without an entertainment license. Having the television on till 11:30 wouldn't necessarily violate the town's noise ordinance.
That's correct.
So you're granting that entertainment license till 11:30, you know, if you wanted to include in here some language that they, you know, they couldn't have live music, for instance, after 10:30, 11:00 o'clock at night, that would be a place to go with that.
Yeah, I apologize for just brain fade here. I didn't, it was on my list of things to check, and I apologize for not having done that. Can, is it possible that we approve these tonight and then perhaps edit if it's necessary, if the entertainment is not in keeping with our noise bylaw?
Well, I think that doesn't supersede our noise ordinances, right? So you can have entertainment as long as you stay within the noise ordinance. I think they're not mutually exclusive, so.
Or they are mutually.
I mean, mutually exclusive, right, yeah. So you have to abide by both. So if your entertainment is, like a TV set stays on, but if your entertainment is an outdoor rock band, then you're allowed to have it through, as long as it meets other, the other ordinance is down.
I think outside is just 9:00, isn't it?
Right, but I'm saying, right, exactly. So it says 11:30.
And by the noise ordinance, just because they have the right to have entertainment until 11:30 p.m., if they get too loud.
They get shut down.
The townsfolk by at 9:00 could say, you're way too loud, you're way above the octave, you know, the decibels level that we'd find appropriate for this time of night, so.
But it seems that it injects uncertainty if our bylaw says 11:00 and then we're signing a document that says 11:30. And then, you know, why, it seems that, to me, that consistency would be the order of the day. And so I would, I would vote for approval with the caveat that we will just clarify the noise ordinance and edit that to 11:00 if necessary.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that. If we're allowed to do that procedurally, I think that makes sense, just to double-check?
Yeah.
Sounds like a motion. Second.
Sounds good to me, Darcey.
Can I have a motion to approve the, let me just go back to my notes here. Can I have a motion to approve the annual entertainment license and renewals pending confirmation on hours of operation?
So moved.
I have a second?
Hours of operation specifically for.
Specifically to noise. Specifically to what, sorry?
Specifically related to entertainment.
Specifically related to entertainment and the noise created by it, for both?
And I will second that. Thank you very much.
All's in favor? Aye. All's opposed? And Jamie, you voted, sorry, he said aye? Okay, so five. Okay. And then, Joe, if we can just get that resolved this week before we forget.
Yep.
I apologize, Joe, for not getting that question to you sooner. I can't believe it's Monday already. I do apologize.
All right, we'll keep going with our licenses. The next one is our Class II license renewal, which is for our, we don't have many, we just have.
We'll get the one.
We only have one. A&amp;M Motors.
Resold used automobiles.
So I can have a motion to approve the A&amp;M Class II license renewal?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And this is one they've had for years.
Yeah.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right, the next one is our Victular's license renewals. So we have a bunch of these, Joe. We have.
Wherever you see a red dot.
American Legion, I'm just going to read what they are, just so we all know. We have American Legion, Post 194, we have Black Cow, we've got Five Sons Pizza, we've got Dunkin' Donuts, we've got Crosby's Marketplace, Hamilton Convenience, Hamilton House of Pizza, Myopia Hunt Club, Weathervein Tavern, The Community House, Indigo DBA, 15 Walnut, Humbleton Farms, Honeycomb, that's it. We didn't have a motion yet, so we have a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the annual common Victular's license for the establishments that Chairman Olson read.
Can I have?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? So I did see one here, Joe, for the Asbury one. The gas station.
I see it here.
Is that in here? What's that one called on Asbury? What's the Asbury station called?
Conven, oh.
A&amp;M?
Yeah, A&amp;M Motors.
Is that for alcohol?
No, it's for sale.
It's for the cars.
For sale.
No, no, the.
But they also have, they also have.
The store.
Oh, oh, oh.
The store that's convenience that they're remodeling right now in Asbury. I don't see that one here, Joe, so I'm not sure if they applied for one. So these are all approved, we'll sign them, but that one I don't remember seeing in the packet.
75 Asbury Street?
Yeah, I don't see that here.
It's at 275 Asbury Street. That's Five Sons Pizza.
So it's further down Asbury Street then?
It should be 203.
It's just the red pages.
Is it Highland? It's on the corner. I'm not sure if it's Highland or Asbury, because it's right in the corner. I'm only saying this because, Joe, I've been waiting for two years for them to open up, and they actually just recently have moved all the cases over, so it looks like they're, look like they're ready to open up. I don't want to hold them back, so.
Oh, of course.
I don't, yeah, you're right, I don't see it in here.
All right, so can we reach out to them tomorrow?
Yeah, they.
They are actually.
They'll be in the convenience store until they get it renewed and.
I know, and they're actually moving forward with stuff, so I want to make sure we support that.
So you did believe renew their liquor license at the last meeting?
Yeah, we did, that's why I was curious, why we're renewing it if they weren't selling liquor, but it looks like they will be soon, so we just want to make sure they get their Victular's license. All right, our next item on the agenda is one-day liquor license for Community House. This came in late, at the end of last week, but we put on the agenda to try and promote their event. So, Joe, can you just quickly summarize what they're doing?
What Community House normally does, they have somebody rent them all that they have a need to have a liquor license. I believe that somebody told me it was just a funeral or a wake or something. That was one of the reasons it came in so late. It wasn't something that they could have planned for. They're just looking to.
And they have their 12C?
They don't have a 12C.
No, they.
They don't need one.
The normal process they've been doing for.
So, and Joe, the, it looks like maybe the application hasn't been kind of updated to, like, along our new policy, that's only a.
Yeah, it happened like right in the same week that we had, but I was out there, so it's unfortunate, a little bit of an overlap, but.
So like, there, I think there's like some insurance things that, anyway, I hope, I'm sure they have insurance, right, but I don't.
Yeah, let's be sure.
Since we just had the policy.
Yeah, that's right. Jamie, thank you for being so conscientious about that. I will tell you that I did speak with Melissa over at the Community House in detail about what they do as I was researching liquor policy. And at that point, she did tell me that they have liability insurance. She quoted the amount to me, and I'm sorry that I cannot remember it right off the top of my head. I do believe it was $2 million. And so I apologize for that. I wish it was fresher in my mind.
All right, do you have a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Community House?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
And they very nicely fall into the category in our new policy also. They're nonprofits, so they are requesting all liquor. And so I think that the only problem is they haven't presented their liability insurance. If you can believe me, then I did speak with him about that.
No, I know, you did a lot of research on it, so.
Really from my involvement in the Community House in the past, that's their policy.
All right. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all's opposed?
There is some other stuff that people are supposed to provide, like proof that they're a nonprofit, which obviously we all know.
Right.
The Community House is.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, Jamie, you're absolutely right. We're taking their word for it, but I agree with you.
Joe, what do I do with these?
Yeah, you're right.
You sign this one.
Where?
Right here.
It says city or town, though.
Thank you.
Chairman of Board of Selectmen, Mayor or Chairman of Board of Selectmen in Hamilton, so you sign here.
All right, next thing on the agenda is burial plot request from out of, from non-residents. So we got two letters, which should have been circulated.
One of them has a lot of current residents in the cemetery.
So this is one request for.
Two requests.
Two requests.
Two separate requests, coincidentally, we got two separate requests. So one is from. One's from Robert Russo, from Fort Lauderdale, Florida. He has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven relatives, and some of them are couples, so eight, nine, 10, so 10 relatives that are buried in the cemetery. And the other one is from.
Beverly?
The one's in Beverly, I think, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Wood Lane and Beverly.
One is from. John Ford and Joyce Horn. Yeah. So one is for two plots, the other one is for.
It asks, being granted a burial plot, so.
So one is for, yeah, so Robert Russo's for one, and then the other one is for two. Joyce Horn and John William Pond is for two adjacent ones.
These different ones? Nope, different ones. Thanks, Jamie.
And they both have relatives that are buried in the cemetery, so. Can I have a motion to approve the, do we need to mention their names, Joe, or can we just be general? Officially, how do we, should I have two motions or one?
You can do them two.
I move.
I don't know what I mean, but I'd mention both families or reference the letters.
All right, so can I have a motion to approve the burial plot request from the, from Robert Russo, Joyce Horn, and John William Pond?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So the one who has, who spent their childhood years in Hamilton and whose parents are buried there, I'm extremely sympathetic to. I just want to talk through the person who wants a burial plot just because some of the person's relatives are here. The person doesn't claim to have ever lived in this town, and we have a small cemetery with a finite number of plots, so I think we should very respectfully talk this through.
So the motion was just about the first one. Do we want to.
No, I did, it was both. I put them both together, but I can divide them up. Let me divide them up. Can I have a motion to approve the adjacent burial plots for Joyce Horn and John William Pond?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Do we need to rescind any motions?
Any further discussion? No, we shouldn't vote on that motion.
We just didn't vote on it, okay.
Any further discussion?
Not on that one.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Because you're, in your comment, because they were residents of Hamilton at one point, so that's, right, they were residents, right, they was a resident, right.
Yeah, he spent, they went to school here, and parents are buried there, and that makes, and we have a small cemetery. As much as we would like to be sympathetic to other people, I think we need to think about our residents as first priority, or people who did live here as first priority. So I would just, I would just like the board to talk about that for a minute and really.
You know, it's a good point. And I think that's a good idea to get sort of a better assessment. And we did, unfortunately, when we talked, because we talked about this a lot, we talked about the rates, right? We never actually talked about this part of it. We talked about, you know, if it's really going to stop people from doing it, and is there money to be, you know, made of? But we talked about how many sort of plots we had left. I don't remember that quantity, but.
Yeah, we talked to Tim at a meeting, one or two times at least, I know, over the years here, that, about kind of capacity and the room for expansion of the cemetery. And I thought, I mean, obviously, it's not infinite, how much room we have there. But I think that, if I remember correctly, Tim said there was potential for more property possibly, but did we just do something with some more plots or something? I can't remember.
Haven't done many yet.
No. Do you know how many we have left?
I don't know.
I mean, if we think about it, we have burial plots that we're signing dates for almost every meeting, right? And, I mean, I certainly am sympathetic, but on the other hand, we need to think about our citizens, and we all love that cemetery.
Well, if we have a precedent, we might find people from all over the country whose relatives live, and the prices are really good.
We've been here long enough, but I'm sure you can find a relative. We've been here long enough, I'm sure you can find a relative that lives in the town. I think it's a good thing, I mean, once again, I don't think we're, I don't think we're going to say no today. I think that, Rose, back to the point that we need to look at it.
Why don't we table the one?
Yeah.
And, Joe, if maybe you can follow up with Tim to ask, or Dolores, how many plots we have left and kind of capacity we have for future annexation of any land in the surrounding area.
That's all speculation.
Yeah, we can't count on.
That's all speculation, right, but I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, that would be.
And then how many requests we get from non-residents per year? And I don't know if we track it, but it's something we probably should track.
I'd say, I mean.
50.
You know, it's more than you think, because, I mean, I've been on the board eight years now or something like that, and I'd probably say we do at least four, five, six a year of non-residents, people that have moved to Florida or have some connection to Hamilton.
But never been a resident, that's, there's a difference between a non-resident and never been a resident, right?
I don't, I don't think we've had that request.
Yeah, this is the first one I've seen, which is never been a resident, right? Usually they moved away, want to come back.
Usually if I grew up here, I moved away.
A lot of towns and cities are very strict about the land, feeding the land to people.
And I wonder if we do think about it, because we're the policy board, right? That maybe there is some type of a policy with the length of residency? You know, as opposed if, if you lived here for a year, does that get you in the door?
So if you're living here and you buy it, it does.
Right, but, you know, I would think that's maybe something to consider, if we are getting short on space.
That's unfortunate to talk about, but I think it's an important policy.
Yes, unfortunately, we have to talk about it.
I think it should be a policy, so.
And these people never lived here, right? This second group.
Agreed, no, it's a good, it's a good point. Let's table it, and then I think that we should look at what, you know, get Tim involved, if he's the right person, talk about capacity and then, and then maybe we do have a policy in terms of either, have been a resident at one point, if there's a duration, or just been a resident, paid taxes, et cetera, whatever that is, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have four more things left. Next item is regional public health nurse and social services, IMA discussion.
So what you have in front of you is an IMA that I had asked council to draft back when we got the grant from the State Department of Public Health for Regional Public Health Nurse and Regional Public Health Social Worker. We extended an offer of employment for the Regional Public Health Nurse position to Rachel Lee, our current Public Health Nurse, and she'll transition to that as soon as we can find a way to replace her. Hopefully sooner than later. We need a working agreement between the four communities. This IMA does not include any appendices about how to split up the cost, because the money's all coming from the state. There's no funds from the town of Hamilton or any of the other towns, so you know, Rachel is aware that this is a grant-funded position. Need to find a way to keep it grant-funded beyond its initial grant. So there's no financial kind of concern for us at this point.
Three-year grant, right? Three-year contract?
Three-year, yeah.
Three-year grant.
And Joe, can you tell us again which towns it is?
The town of Hamilton, the town of Wenham, the town of Essex, and now the town of Rockport.
Rockport, yeah.
Initially, it was Manchester, but Manchester withdrew. And Rockport agreed to take their place and maintain the size of the area, so the state kept all its funding office funding award to us in place.
Did, Joe, did Manchester say why they backed out? I'm just curious. Did they go with another
No, they're just, no, they're just
They're going to keep their
They're just going to keep doing what they're doing.
What they're doing, okay.
I found it surprising, quite frankly, because we were Rachel Lee has been partnering with them to help them, because they needed the help, and they but they the Board of Health voted was, the Board of Selectmen were supportive of the regional agreement. The Board, the local Board of Health in Manchester voted to withdraw.
So the grant is obviously more than salary, right?
It includes enough funding for salary benefits for both positions.
Those two positions, okay.
Public Health Nurse in a three-quarters time, thirty-two hour a week, Public Health Social Worker. We have delayed the hiring of that position until we get the Public Health Nurse position in place first.
What about the administrative, administration of those two positions, the payroll accounting, things like that? Is that
There's a little bit of money in there so that the town of Hamilton can manage that stuff.
That comes out of the grant, too?
Yeah, that comes out of the grant. Town of Hamilton was the lead in the grant application and is the lead in this process.
Has Essex, Rockport, and Wenham also kind of vetted this document so far?
This is before all their, we're put for all boards at this time. I believe Essex may have already voted, but I know Brendan Creighton was really anxious. Brendan Zabricki, I apologize. Brendan Zabricki was eager to get this signed, so but it was being presented to the other two boards as well.
So it says the term of the agreement starts September 1st. Is that going to, is that date going to change?
We could, we could
They say we can retro
We've had, we can change it. We can make it effective, you know, once all four towns sign, or however you like. I'm not worried about that so much. It's okay to have the agreement be in place, you know. You know, backdate the agreement, because we've gotten the grant, you know, we've gotten the first allotment of grant funds in the town of Hamilton's treasury back in June, so.
So how many hours, so should the social services, the social worker position go through? We would have one quarter of three quarters? Is that it?
So the, yeah, so the way this, all these grants, the way both these positions work is that the position, the people are hired to work for the entire region all the time. So it's, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be splitting it up and allocating, oh, you get this many hours and you get that many hours. To do with as you please. They would always be working on joint programs across the four communities.
Oh, I see.
To try and kind of be a safety net for things that we're not able to provide individually on our own.
Coordinate.
Yeah.
Okay, so, right, that makes more sense. I wasn't quite sure what the social worker position would be able to do, having such a small amount of the total, okay. And is it, so it'll be a full-time position divided by the four towns, or it'll be comprehensive?
It'll be comprehensive, yeah.
Should be working on policies for the towns? That's interesting. I like that idea, okay. Is there a job description somewhere?
Yeah, the job description, they both were posted on the town's website over the summer. We pulled them down when we were having a little bit of trouble getting applicants. But I can, I can circulate them to the board if you like at some point, but
I'd like to see that, yeah, that's good. And I certainly support Rachel Lee, holy macro. She's she is amazingly conscientious. I think that the towns collectively, collectively will be very happy that they have her on board.
And there is somewhat of a description in the document.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And after three years so we're only voting on a three-year agreement?
Yep.
After three years, we need to get funding or the position goes away?
Correct.
And if we get funding, we probably seek to renew the agreement, although it may be amended or changed at some point based on how it works out.
And if a town, if a town, if we sign the agreement in a town, does it need, does it require to have four towns sign onto it?
No, the
To get the grant money?
The state wanted the, wanted the area being served to be a certain size. That's why, you know, they asked us to try to find an alternate when Manchester pulled out. And that's why it worked out great, that Rockport was willing and eager actually to join in. But I've had conversations with the state since then. They're not looking to penalize anybody if a year into it, somebody feels like they're, it's not for them, they can withdraw, and we won't be harmed.
We won't be harmed. So that's all I was worried about, is I want to make sure I don't get penalized if somebody drops out, be under control.
The state's really looking at all these grants as public health capacity building. They're looking for opportunities to build up the local public health resources across the state. So this might be, you know, renewed with other grant funds down the road. You know, keep in mind that the state, last week, governor did sign twenty million dollars worth of funds from ARPA to support local public health, so, you know, we could wind up with, no, might have been more than that.
So currently, we are funding this out of our
It's two hundred million.
Currently, we're funding this money out of, out of what, before the grants?
Out of the fund, the state, the Department of Public Health set up a grant, a Public Health Excellence Grant Program last year that we applied to. And so there was some money put aside by the state for this.
But this hasn't kicked in yet. This amount of money hasn't started being funded yet?
For these two positions
We have it.
We have it already.
We have, we have enough for the first year already.
We do, okay. So we started to spend it.
We haven't, because we haven't hired anybody.
So Rachel's not working right now.
Rachel's working for us still, but she'll be working for them.
It's going to switch as soon as this gets sorted out.
So we have funding from that position that was allocated for something else? Does that funding, or do we already plan it that way, that we would only have to fund her salary through so much of the year?
I see your question. You're asking, so since Rachel's switching over to this contract, where she's split
We're trying to hire replacement for her right now.
You are, okay, so you're going back for that position?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my question. Thanks, Sean.
Yep. And we have, if something goes south with this, which I don't think it will, we, I think, have a sixty-day notification termination. Or if Rockport or Wenham, whoever pull out, it won't collapse the whole thing. We'll still carry out the rest of the grant without whatever entity pulls out.
And if we lose the position, if somebody resigns, quits, whatever, we have time to fill the position without penalty as well, too, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Pretty broad job description.
And who, sorry, who wrote this, Joe?
Who wrote the IMA?
Yes.
KP Law.
Okay. And so we just, this is not a vote, this is just a discussion?
Yeah, we'll ask you to vote at another meeting.
So give me the, sorry, give me the process again. So we, we voted this before, the other towns have seen this draft or not?
They, it's been shared with them. I believe it's in front of all four, all three of the boards of selectmen in the other towns. I asked them to present it, and we're trying to have the voted on by January.
By January, okay. And we'd be the last one to vote or the first ones to vote? Do we wait for all their feedback before they, before we vote, or do we vote and then issue it for them to vote?
Does it not matter?
I just want to do it twice, right?
This is a good question, Darcy, doesn't it, right? I mean, if we have changes.
To date, none of the other TAs have asked for any changes to the document. Brendan, as I said, Brendan was prepared to bring it to his board as it was, and asked for a vote right away, so they have all, the professional staff in all three towns has reviewed it and indicated that they're planning to bring it to the Board of Selectmen for the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, as the case may be, and the towns to have it voted on. If you have changes you'd like to make, please let us know, so that I can make the other towns aware as soon as possible. We kind of felt like this was close to, you know.
Let me see if I
All four towns are represented by KP Law, I believe, so all four towns sign off on KP Law serving in all of our interests, so.
And the state organization funding the grant has also, probably has to look at this, right?
State is offering to, for towns that want it, to provide assistance in developing an IMA.
But they don't need to approve it?
But they don't have to approve it, no.
Okay.
We determine how we, how we organize with other communities, not the state.
Yeah.
Was there a minimum of how many communities should be involved in this?
It was a number of people, I think, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, they were trying to, like I said before, and as Sean just alluded to, they were, they're trying to serve, you know, service areas. They want to like cover a certain amount of population in a given area. Rockport was a kind of a good stand-in for Manchester's, they're similar in size.
Right.
So when does the compensation rate get filled in?
The compensational rate was based on what, on what we were awarded in the grant and what we provided in our grant application, so the compensation for the Regional Public Health Nurse position, for instance, I believe, is a forty-hour-a-week position at not to exceed ninety-nine thousand dollars a year, based on the market rate for a public, for a licensed certified public health nurse.
Okay, so in the, in our packets, it's blank.
It's blank, right.
Yeah.
All right, sorry.
But it, so it's filled in
It's filled in somewhere. I can, I can provide you that, if you like.
Good. So I don't know. I think I'm okay to look at it again and wait to see if other towns have changes. I think that seems
I wasn't asking to have a vote tonight, so.
Right, no, I know that. I was just offering that.
Also, the IMA is, in Hamilton, is only signed by you? But everybody, everyone else is signed by the board, or do we need to have the board sign this?
Town of Hamilton, I'm the hiring authority.
Okay.
So, so it all has to be signed by me. You'd authorize me to sign it.
Well, the other towns have their boards of selectmen.
Yeah.
Because they're the hiring authority.
Different government structure.
All right, all right, so we'll talk about it next time, or I'd like to wait till we get some feedback, but if we get feedback in the next week, we'll put it on the next agenda. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Shared Assessing Services Proposal Wenham update. So it looks like you've done some spreadsheets
Yeah.
for a couple of different options. Obviously, they all save costs. The question is, do we get the same service? What do we give up? What are the
Part of the reason we went down this road, if you remember, is that we were having trouble, and we are still having trouble attracting any applicants to our position at what we pay. And by way of explanation, I'll say that the town of Danvers advertised three separate times this summer, and they were advertising at over a hundred thousand dollars a year for their, actually closer to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for their position, before they finally found an applicant their third time through. We can't compete in that market on our own. Wenham only has part-time assessor, and that gentleman's looking to retire soon, so it made sense for us to talk to them about, is there something we could do combined that would allow us to hire at a better salary and hopefully at least attract some candidates? That's what we've tried to put together as a model that would allow us to do that. There's two different options. We're still considering that. No decisions have been made. The Board of Selectmen down there hasn't taken a vote. I haven't asked you for a vote. But we're planning our budget right now, assumptions based on some kind of a shared arrangement. So we're, you know, we wanted to keep you in, up to speed on with how far we've gotten. I know from talking to the town administrator down there, if, you know, they may be leaning in one way or the other, and the other, on the two options. There's something to be said for either way, if we, if we share the whole department, or if we just share the director or chief assessor at the top, and then we're each on our own. It's actually cheaper, I think, a little bit for us to do it the second way, but I'm not sure that you'd have as cohesive of an organization. You'd have one person that we bounce them back and forth, and not necessarily a department working together on assessing in the two towns, so.
That's a big question.
Are there models that you can refer to?
There aren't a lot of people that share assessors, so there's not a lot. I mean, we're kind of making it up a little bit here, but you know, try to use a little bit of common sense and use what might work in a bunch of Good news is that we both use the same assessing software. Parcels are, town parcels aren't that they're similar to our population numbers, so it would still be close to a two-thirds, one-third split, but not exactly. It's a, it's a pretty good it seems like it'd be pretty it seems like it makes sense. So we're planning on this as being part of our budget presentation, which will now be at the end of January. Once we get the final confirmation from the FinCon, but that's, that's the direction we're trying to move in, and in the interim, we have offered, we've elevated the administrative assistant that was in that office here to be interim assistant assessor, so that she can be more properly compensated for all the work she's been doing with the absence of a, and the absence of director there. Jane's pretty much been carrying that department by herself.
Yeah, she's been, I've heard some wonderful, wonderful things about
She's been doing
what a great job she's doing from a lot of different people.
Yeah, Jane's a superstar.
Yeah.
So we're, I just wanted to make you all aware of what we were looking at. Welcome feedback and input, you know, before I go too far down the road to
So currently, right now, in our, in our town budget, it looks like we budget like two-hundred-and-five thousand? And this would cost us two-hundred-and-fourteen, above a two-fourteen, you get a much higher sal, you're getting a much higher salary, because you're combining salaries, so we get, we get, we're getting a candidate and splitting that sort of bump in salary with another town.
And you said Danvers was offering a hundred-and-thirty?
Yeah. But it's a much larger town.
Much larger town.
A lot more complexity. They have a lot of pub, they have a lot of commercial property, a lot of personal property.
But I'd imagine the loan rates
But in order to find good, qualified assessors, particularly if we want to find somebody with experience, they're not looking at our town at less than eighty, when they could sit down, they could turn around and say to hey, Danvers is asking, is offering a hundred-and-thirty, yeah, I'd have to do more work, but I'll be getting paid a lot better for it.
Right. So the only other question for is on the, on the, on the split. What's the split based on?
Based on number of parcels, taxable parcels in each town.
So the only problem I have with the, with the second option
Yeah.
or sorry, the first option, which is the all-baked-in option
Yeah.
is that there's an assistant assessor to Hamilton, assistant assessor to Wenham, so a completely dedicated town. That one should just be, that one shouldn't be split up. That should be just, like that sixty-five thousand, we shouldn't pay part of Wenham's sixty-five thousand, you know what I'm saying? Because that's dedicated just to Wenham. So you should base That shouldn't be a percentage base, that should be
Salary should
Sixty-five, sixty-five should be equal, equal. Everything else should be based on parcel, because that's a dedicated employee just to Wenham, it's not split, that's not a shared service. Just want to make sure you do the math. That sixty-five isn't shared. That's dedicated to Wenham. It's a balance of it that should be shared, based on plots.
So you're kind of advocating for just sharing the assessor, not sharing the department, then?
No, sharing the department, but not the, you could share the training, education, contract servicing, dues and subscriptions, travel supplies, expenses, but that one position is dedicated to Wenham, and for Hamilton to be a percentage of that, of that
I mean, really, in a lot of ways, I really didn't necessarily look at it that way. One of the things that I looked at is, for instance, if you have this model, you have assistant assessor in Hamilton, assistant assessor in Wenham, for instance. These people are going to take, these folks are going to take vacations, right?
Right.
The idea here was to make sure we always had full-time service in both towns, which neither town really had in the past. So if you have this, this arrangement with three full-time employees as part of a shared department, both the assistant assessor and Wenham goes on vacation, then the, for the week that that person's on vacation, the chief assessor can primarily be down the street. And Wenham, we understand that there's still coverage, because they can communicate through telephone and cellphone and everything else to make sure that there's still always coverage in both towns. And vice versa, that Wenham person would be expected to assist, so that when our Hamilton assistant assessor is on vacation, that
So it just sort of equals out.
It just sort of equals out all the time.
I, I kind of agree with Bill's assessment on there about if Wenham is going to keep a full-time assistant assessor, they should bear the cost of their own in that part of the division of the expenses. I, I agree, you know, with, with Bill on that.
Okay.
I don't know, what does everybody else think?
So what there's, what you're, let me make sure I understand this. What you're saying is that the assistant assessor of Wenham that is on this page of expenses should probably be covered by Wenham on their own.
That's what they're saying. That's not how
Take, right, I would say, take the, take the assistants out, but split everything else.
Everyone has their own assistant.
Each town has a full-time person within their building.
Yeah.
He's not, they're not shared. So it shouldn't be part of the shared proposal.
And we shouldn't be subsidized.
I see what you're saying. They say, what if we want to share them for a vacation?
But then it would be reciprocity to, to Hamilton, right? I mean, it would be reciprocal to Hamilton.
We would still pay, yeah, it would still be
It'd be the same run rate, right?
Yeah, we'd still, we'd still, we'd still be redundant. We would just pay that person. We just, yeah, you don't need to split services, because you're doing, they're on vacation two weeks, we're on vacation two weeks.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying, reciprocity, so you don't need to
Yeah, you're still, it's still, it's still equal.
I, I think And that would save sixty-five grand.
Well, it would save a percentage of the sixty-five. We're just going to pay the sixty-five grand, we're not going to pay typically, we'd be paying more, because if you take a hundred-and-thirty, if you take the sixty-five, sixty-five
Oh, I see what's happening, yes.
And you say it's a hundred-and-thirty
Yep.
Hamilton's going to pay eighty of the hundred-and-thirty, and they're going to pay fifty, so we're going to pay eighty for our assistant, they're going to pay fifty for their assistant. It doesn't make any sense.
I agree.
But the assessor makes sense, because it's one person doing eighty percent of the work for Hamilton and twenty percent of the work for Wenham. But when you, when you have two people who are split between towns, and they're spending all the time in a town, it shouldn't be a split service. It's my opinion, but
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense.
I agree, I agree, Bill.
Is there any downside to that, Joe, that you know about, that you could illuminate?
We can, let me, you know, I don't, I can't think of anything off the top of my head right now. Other than, you know, you might wind up in a situation where you have an assistant in one town being paid more than the assistant in the other town.
Well, we can't
Oh, well, we do that all the time.
We're going to do it all the time. We're going to do it all the time.
All right, that's their issue, not ours. They'll say they're a smaller town, so they're going to play, pay less, right? I don't know.
Yeah, because right now, they pay, right now, they have an executive secretary. They pay twenty-eight thousand dollars to them. We have assessing clerk. So it's a different, it's a different position.
Right.
I think it's a good idea. I'm a hundred percent for shared services amongst a town. I just think it needs to be equitable, that's all.
Yeah.
And once again, Joe, these are just, who made these, these are just obviously just budgetary estimates. Who came up with these numbers?
Yeah.
You did, okay.
I developed.
Based on what you saw the going rate for different positions was.
And what we've, and, you know.
And what we're going to offer.
I was kind of fitting them into our, into our compa classification table.
And what's the second, second option, and we're just splitting just the?
Splitting just the cost.
Just the assessor.
You know, just the chief, principal assessor.
But we don't, but you don't have with the rest of the department, it's hard to equate them. If we could see the option two with the other costs below the line.
Yeah.
We can assess if we save money or not.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Because like you said, Hamilton might, because it's a running department. Salary's the most important, amount of expenses, and you're still going to have to have, whether you have a big town or a small town, you got to have a cop machine, and it costs the same amount of money, so.
Right, right, it's benefits and FTEs, right?
It's the salary that costs them. But no, I think this is a great idea, and I'm in favor. Joe, when do you need to talk about timing for this? When do you need direction on this?
We'll probably be looking for, you know, additional, you know, any additional input you have. This is helpful tonight. It helps push me in a different direction. We'll probably be looking for a vote on this as part of the budget process. So we'll be making a presentation about our proposal for FY twenty-three budget at the end of January, and then the board, I think, will be making deliberations about that at their meeting, first meeting in February.
Okay.
Do you have any preference, Joe?
You know, I think, I hear what you're saying about the, you know, about the incremental cost allocation to Hamilton for Wenham's assistant assessor. But I also believe that when you, when you form a partnership with somebody and you go into business with them, you know, you take on all the risks and costs and benefits associated with that. I hear what you're saying. It'd be a little cheaper for Hamilton, but it ostensibly either make it more expensive for Wenham, and therefore tougher for them to agree to, or it could just sour them in the whole idea, and then we're left, you know, standing by ourselves again.
Yeah, I think that's how we sell it, because we're still going to share, we're still going to share costs in the person we're sharing. We're not going to share costs in people we're not sharing.
Yeah.
And once again, this isn't a business, because there's no, there's no risk, reward, right? This is all overhead. There's no profit out of this thing that we're going to make if we do a good job.
I hear you.
So, yeah, all right.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is town manager report template. So I looked at the template, which I like. I think it's very user-friendly. I'm just trying to think about how, how we track stuff in terms of, if like, in terms of like, oh, did this item get closed out or not get closed out? And so if somebody falls off one week, how do you know it got, it fell off one week? I'm wondering if you can like, almost like, leave it on for a week and just say like, closed item or something? Because it's just like one of those things where you always, sometimes things fall off the agenda, and it's, did you forget to put it on, or did it actually get resolved?
We.
You know, wait, track issues and then show that they're resolved is my only question.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could establish some type of a, like you said, some kind of a tracking thing, some type of a Google Doc that Joe could share with all of us, and it could be a read-only document to us, but he can make edits on it.
Okay.
And we could even, he could even put the town manager report in that, you know? And that could even go out to the public as a read-only file, and it could be PDF, whatever. You can go on the website or whatever social media we wanted to put it on. But it's kind of food for thought. It's a kind of help with tracking and stuff. It could even help with project tracking and stuff like that for Joe if he needed it. Things like that. There's a whole bunch of different platforms that do that.
I bet it.
And I think with, when Michael was here, we did that a little bit at the end, where we could see ongoing projects to kind of just check in and see where they were. I mean, that would be helpful, I think, to us, too.
Yep.
So you're talking like a Google Docs thing, right?
Google Docs, almost like a spreadsheet.
You don't have to even.
Right, he populates it the first time, and then it's there, and then he can just update it, you know? Like, for instance, like the cell phone tower.
Right.
It could be Verizon said contract, blah, blah, blah. And then you can look back in the timeline of it and see where it is.
It's like a OneNote, or like, it's like a OneNote or something like that.
Yeah, just, there's no status in the change of the cell tower. So that's, lets people know that you've considered it, you don't have anything new to it. It shouldn't necessarily fall off. Maybe that should be the one, one sentence to sort of discuss the status of that. But maybe not take things off the list until, until it's appropriate to do so, until the issue has been resolved.
Yeah, right, right. I debate like that. I don't want to have a running list of a hundred things with nothing on it, but I also don't want to lose track of things.
Right.
Which I like, what maybe what Sean's saying is, that's in a, that's in Excel, you know? But when you put out the report, you hide the ones that you don't need to.
Right.
But at least you know that it's either been resolved, or it's in a holding pattern, or you're waiting on for information. But that's the only thing I think this is missing, is just items on here that maybe there's no update, or, and how do we know that there's no update? And to make sure, we ask about them the following week. Because if I go back, if somebody's on this list and I go back to the previous week, and it was on the week before that, it's like, oh, I forgot to ask about it. And it's like, it drops off, and we've all forgotten about it.
So what's, what's wrong if, if people would want, I mean, one of the reasons we're doing this is to be more transparent and informative to citizens. So they will be able to find sort of act, activities with no action this week, and that'll be in sort of a separate little click, a little, what do you, what do you call those things?
Hyperleg.
Hyperleg.
Hyperleg, there you go, thank you, right? So at least it would be there, but it wouldn't be in the body of the current document.
I don't have a problem with, yeah, as long as.
As long as.
In a format.
And you could also indicate something is in process by just writing in process.
Process, right, yeah.
Right, pending, whatever, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So, I mean, really, how many, how many issues would there be, maybe?
Not that many, maybe a couple dozen.
Yeah, I mean, really, not that many. It would do.
Like, one would be the backflow valve.
With the back.
Funding for town hall.
Okay.
So, Joe, speaking of your update, so the Hamilton Board of Health meet tomorrow.
Right.
And they're going to talk about mask mandates again?
Yes, it's on their agenda to discuss mask mandates. A number of municipalities around the area have begun putting them in place for public buildings, including, I believe, the town of Wenham. At least that they popped up on a map that I just saw of towns that have enacted additional mandates. I'm sure you probably all saw the news today about the city of Boston.
Oh, yeah.
Be looking for vaccine, basically vaccine passports for entering certain types of businesses. I do not have any indication from the Board of Health here that they're looking at anything that extreme. But people continue to be concerned about the rising numbers of the Omicron variant in the holiday season.
Of course.
They're spiking, so they're.
You know, I do have to say.
Try to remind people to be safe.
Yeah, I do have to say that shopping this past weekend, I mean, I would say.
Ninety.
Ninety percent of people are back to wearing masks.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
And it's, it's nice that people are using common sense.
By their, right, by their own choice, right? I mean, right now, it's, big matches are doing it on their own choice. Like you said, it's ninety percent, at least.
At least.
It could be higher.
It may very well be higher, and I think that's great, that people are being so proactive, so we'll see.
So, Joe, I'll ask you a couple of questions in terms, because we're looking at it. But the other thing, too, was the hours for town hall this week and next week?
Oh, yeah, I should have put that on there. So because the, because the holiday is on Saturday, we recognize that holiday on Friday, and because we normally give people, we normally close town hall a half day early on Christmas Eve, we're going to close town hall a half day early on Thursday. Employees would stay, and they could use their personal time if they want to leave when the town hall closes. No, but town hall will close at noon on Thursday and be closed through the Christmas weekend.
Okay.
We won't be doing that for New Year's Eve. We will be closed on New Year's Eve, because it's, again, recognizing the Saturday holiday on Friday, but we won't close early on Thursday for the New Year's Eve day. I don't think we need to give people, you know, twenty-four hour notice to get started on celebrating.
Okay.
That's a little bit more than we need to do, so.
Okay. And then Chief Stevens is around when you are not around.
Right, well, and I'll be, you know, so some personal information. I am going to be taking Thursday, the thirtieth, as a personal day, because I have some personal business to attend to that day. And then obviously Friday will be a holiday, and then the next week, due to the personal business on Thursday, I will be busy working, not here, but I will be on vacation, but I will be in the state. So I don't need to point on this, an interim or acting. I just need to be able to be reachable by phone and respond, which I can and will do during that week. That week of vacation, I will be in-state, just down in Swansky.
Okay.
So I won't be in acting or interim that week. It'll just be, call me if you need me.
Okay.
All right, any comments on the? Okay.
Again, I mean, this isn't finalized yet. Hopefully, for the meeting, I will be here in the meeting on Thursday, even though I'll be on vacation that day, I will be present. I think what I've arranged is for Alex to be able to be here and run the meeting, and I'll join the meeting from home. Or I may just come up, because I might need the break. But I expect to try to finalize, take what Sean and Bill and the rest of you have offered in terms of feedback on the town manager report template, fill it out more, add a tracking component, either through a Google Doc or something, and then we'll, we'll have another version for you to look at at that meeting. And then if it's all good, it'll be more complete report. And then I'll take, I think the new format is that we'll be giving you a draft report on the meeting dates. Give me any feedback, or you want more information, we can go in, make those changes, and then we post it for the meeting, for the Monday in between your meetings.
One thing, what's up from a previous meeting, it sort of has, once again, lost, maybe Tim's working in the background, I don't know, is that we had asked him to mark up a sidewalk plan in town, so we could sort of make it, look at where, what roads have sidewalks on two sides, what have sidewalks on one side, and what has, what roads have no sidewalks. So we can get an assessment of a master plan, because I think it should be part of the master plan in terms of looking at pathways, walkways, connecting our town.
Yeah, and I can't remember if we had any of that when we did our street assessment a few years back. And I can't remember if Tim remembered that or not. I know we assessed all the streets and their condition.
Tim didn't think it would be very hard to do it, but he didn't know if he had the document already done. But he says he has the information, whether he has to hire somebody to do it or do it himself. He thought it wasn't heavy lifting, but it'd be good to see if we could get that going for 2022. Okay. Next item on the agenda is availability of Gordon Conwell building for town use discussion. So as I mentioned before, Joe and I went over there, met with the president, took a tour. As you know, a lot of different discussions are going on with Gordon Conwell. You know, they sold thirteen lots recently, and some of them are being cleared currently. I don't know how many building permits have been pulled, but.
I thought it was only ten lots.
Ten? It was originally thirteen, so maybe it went down to ten.
I think it's only twenty acres. It's just under twenty acres, and so.
I think it's nine lots, actually.
Yeah, so.
Okay, sorry, I will stand corrected. Do not quote me on this. So anything I'm saying now is basically just, these are just thoughts and options, nothing set in stone. Those are draft comments, if you will. So we know there's a master plan, steering committee, and a master plan being done, so we looked up there for some options on what could or could not happen based on our current zoning in those areas. We had that discussion, but more, most importantly, we looked at a, and also, also there's some affordable housing options up there with some of their buildings, I think it's their A and B?
It's maybe all six elements.
Okay, so there's some affordable housing.
Six are under discussion with it.
And once again, these are all private, and these are all private, you know, private property, dealing with private entities. So right now, the town isn't involved, but we just are hearing the conversations going on. At some point, we'll be getting involved, hopefully steer it in an area that is, is in the best interest of the town. But right now, we have not, don't have that purview, because it's really, you know, private discussions among private entities. But what we did look at was building relationship with them, building trust with Gordon, and maybe looking at some property there, because when we were going to renovate town hall, we were going to move our town hall services up into a building up there. I've been talking to Joe about the fact that we don't have ADA accessibility on the second floor, and so it's really not proper to have people up there. So in terms of making this, letting the town understand this is a real issue, we need to make some real steps. So until we get our town hall approved and realize it's important, this building, it can't just sit here like the way it is, we need to find some alternate location. So we had an initial meeting. The building layout seems to be very, it's a perfect sort of municipal-type building. Has a nice front door, very clear entry with lots of parking spots in front, very easy to get to.
Pilgrim Hall?
This is Pilgrim Hall, yeah.
Yeah, familiar with it.
They would use some of the building for a program they have, but it would be off to the right or upstairs. So it would need some work, and we budgeted that work. But so we got, it's a planning, it's a process, but the initial comments were, we should continue looking at this as an option.
I think part of the reason to bring it to the whole board now is to kind of get a sense from the board if this is the direction we want us to pursue. Obviously, as Bill said, the existing building doesn't meet ADA compliance. It also isn't fire-rated. It doesn't meet building code for the way we use it. We are taking steps to move some people out, but we still have a lot of people that work up on the second floor, and, you know, it's my recommendation that we do something about that, that we move in a direction to take those services off of the second floor and put them someplace where people can get to them. And I haven't seen it yet, but I indicated to Gordon Conwell that we were appreciative of the kind of terms of the last agreement, and we were hoping we'd see something similar. We haven't gotten, we just met with him last week, so we haven't gotten any kind of proposal from him yet. But the president indicated they'd be willing to have us up there as temporary tenants for a couple of years. And as Bill said, we do have some money left over from the money that was appropriated by town meeting to outfit that building for us. So, you know, I want to know from the board whether you want me to pursue this and push for it. I think that we could probably be in there this summer, if we need to be, by June.
I am thrilled. Thank you, Bill. And yes, I think this is the way to go. I think we have got to make sure that our government is open to every single person in this town. And I think that's great. I think this is an opportunity for us to really serve everyone.
Yeah.
So I'm thrilled. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll keep negotiating with Gordon and look at what the cost would be, that sort of paint, and a little bit, maybe some, a couple of walls here and there, some paint, some lights, nothing major.
It makes sense to maybe, keep in mind that if we go in that direction, we'll have to extend our insurance coverage to incorporate the part of the building we're residing over there. We'll still own this building with no ongoing project. It wouldn't make sense to just button it up and walk away. So I think what we're thinking about is moving certain offices over to the campus and keeping some here. And I'll work with Tim to develop a plan for what that is, what the timeline for that work is, how much it'll cost us. Because like I said, I'm pretty sure we have enough money in the funds that have already been appropriated by town meeting to handle those costs. We'll make sure of that. We'll get a good, a firm number on it, and put together a schedule and plan for the board to consider.
And the other part of that was renting a trailer for Tim and putting Tim here, right? Tim wants to stay here in the yard.
Really? Oh, you're serious?
Yeah, no, I'm serious. He wants, no, I mean, these temporary construction trailers are, so putting a trailer in the, you know, in the yard.
It's his yard.
That's just right here.
It's a little awkward to ask the chief of the department to be in a neighborhood of town, so.
And there's spots for it back there, so it's, and once again, it's not a heavy monthly cost. We're going to put the whole thing together. We'll see if it makes sense, but we just want to make sure that you guys agree that we should move forward the plan to provide. And we'll see how, and then obviously, in the meantime, we got to push this project, right? So it's not, it's not doing one inside the others, it's doing both, but it's making real steps to show the town that we have an issue and we need to fix it.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I like, I like that idea, because it's what we had planned should the renovation had been approved financially. While I certainly support that, the other part of it is working toward finding a way to get this renovation through, because if we spend all the money, all the money that we had allotted, I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, I realize that, but to set the town hall personnel up at Pilgrim Hall for the eighteen months or twenty-four months that it was going to take, we need to be moving forward vigorously again, so that timeline, you know, I don't want this effort to be short-sighted. we need to be moving forward vigorously again, so that, that timeline, you know, I, I don't want this effort to be short-sighted. I want us to be thinking broadly about while we're doing that, we need to do this as well. And so we, as a board, make a commitment again to put this Town Hall project back on the front burner and maybe look at the Town Hall Building Committee again so we can do it simultaneously.
I agree, I think, I agree, I think we just need to take this one more step to make sure it's feasible. To make sure that we can, because we talked about duration, we talked about, you know, twelve months at least at a time, but extended up to three years. Because the goal was that within three years, we would be, so I don't, I agree, I don't want to be there for a year and come back here. It doesn't do anything good for anybody, right? So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a multi-stepped process.
It's a small, you think.
But let's make sure that it's, it's a viable option before we, but I think at the next meeting, we can talk about the, but I agree, it would be good if we can get this Town Hall renovation project to make sense and to get the town to agree it makes sense because it needs to be done and we can't kick the can down the road much further.
And that would also, moving there would mean that it's, it's ADA compliant at this location and the other location. Well, that's a great thing.
It's a good start, right?
Just speaking about ADA compliance and kind of all these plans too, I'd let you know that last week the FinCon did vote to make a transfer of twenty thousand dollars from the reserve fund to the Town Manager's Office so that we can hire the call-in center at UMass Boston to do a SETP plan. So a SETP plan is a self-evaluation and transitional plan for ADA.
What kind of plan?
Set, a SETP plan, a self-evaluation and transition plan.
Okay.
For ADA accessibility of all town facilities, not just the Town Hall. So this will give us, also give us an actual accounting of what efficiencies we have in all of our buildings and playgrounds, all public facilities that the town owns and operates. It doesn't create, create and, and a need to do anything right away. You get the plan and then as you're able to, you move on, moving forward with those, with those priorities, step by step. But it will, it will lay out exactly, you know, within the plan. And that is the first step we need to take to be eligible to apply to the Mass Opposite Disability for any grants from them, so.
Mass Cultural Council has a, has a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for public space, which is what the second floor would.
Wouldn't that be a great venue for Bo Soma?
Those little darlings, yes.
So we're trying to move, we're trying to move all this stuff ahead for you, so.
Thank you.
Well, that's exciting, that's very exciting to, to think about that. How can we get this on the front burner again for the benefit of the whole town?
Yeah.
Want to make sure we signed the documents and then I will entertain a motion, Darcy?
Oh, yes, I moved that we adjourn for the evening.
Have a second?
Merry Christmas and happy holiday.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Happy holiday season greetings, everything.
Yes, thank you.
Christmas, yeah, Hanukkah.
I think it falls on a Saturday, it sort of makes, because it makes, it makes more sense than, because it gives us a nice weekend and you don't have to, these half weeks.
Two to a three-day weekend.
Half weeks, these two or three days.
Second or motion?
Second motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, we'll see you all in 2022.